Meeting for July 20th is open. First order of business, the meeting minutes for June 15th. Any corrections, deletions? Move to accept that, didn't you?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. David, I'm gonna ask you to sit on all of these.
Okay.
Next order of business is 487 Groton Road. The petitioner has filed for a continuance till August what, Joe?
August 17th.
August 17th. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, can I just say something before we perform?
Sure.
Thank you. I want Attorney Michael Bonner to come before the board and thank you for acting upon my request last month. I inadvertently didn't appear and wouldn't bring something before this board without intentionally appearing, so thank you for acting on that. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, 25 Oak Hill Ro- Oak Road, not Oak Hill, Oak Road. Mary and Ryan Flanagan. Are the Flanagans here? Come up to the microphone, please.
Yep.
Sit, take a seat right there.
Thank you.
We have both your names for the record, please.
Mary Flanigan.
Ryan Flanigan.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the Flanagans are here because they want to build a 22 by 22 garage that will result in a 10-foot, two-inch side yard setback where 15 feet is required. And they are looking for a variance for this on 25 Oak Road. All right. Tell us what you want to do.
All right, so we're petitioning for the variance to build a garage on the side of the house, the other side of the house. It would be even less space between the property line. And we can't put it in front of the house because there's, again, less space. We can't put it behind the house because that's where our septic take is. So we want a garage mainly for the safety. We have a one-year-old son. There's a lot of wildlife in our neighborhood, surprisingly. We have a fox family. There was bear sightings. And then we think it has to be safe for in the wintertime and the weather when it's snowy out when we're loading our car with our son. Do you have any more comments?
I guess the way our house is positioned on the lot, there's not any spot that we could really fit it in without encroaching on the required setbacks.
Um, yeah, now there's one of those areas where we see a lot of folks that come in to do some additions. And so in addition to this garage, you're gonna put a second floor in the house?
Yes.
Okay. So you're just here for the garage?
Yes.
Anybody on the board have any questions, comments?
I just had one question on the butt. It's like looking, facing the house, you want to put this garage out. How close is that neighbor's house on Lot 204? Doesn't look like it's terribly close.
On the side where the garage will go?
Yeah. Yeah.
We're 35 feet from the property line. I don't know how far. I'm assuming their house is 15 feet for the setback, but I can't be certain of that.
You think it's further than 15 feet away from the lot line?
I do think it is. Because they, in the past, they wanted to put a porch on that side.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they decided to go with another.
Like a smaller deck add-on.
They were denied a porch.
No, and they never went through with it.
So are they aware of what it is you want to do?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Do they have no objections?
No.
Okay, so I'm good.
So, so it's, is it like a greenhouse with a brick front, the neighbor?
Yes.
So your garage is on the right-hand side of the house now? I mean, your driveway, rather.
If you're facing the house, it's on the right.
So you're gonna, that's gonna be lawn after your?
Eventually, we will. Not, not as part of this project, just to save costs, we'll just get this done for now.
And you're gonna have two driveways? You're gonna have a garage on the left with a driveway and maintain the driveway on the right as well?
For a little bit until we can afford to.
Tear it up and?
Yeah.
Put a lawn in, perhaps?
We'll let our son play with his bikes and stuff on that one for now.
So will you go to blacktop a driveway up to the garage in this project?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And do you have a timeframe roughly of when you might be able to tear the other driveway up?
Um.
Three months, six months, 10 years?
Probably, what do you think, another a year or so?
Yeah, a year.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay. Um, are there questions from anybody on the board? Comments?
It seems like it's a small mention, but we need to navigate.
Definitely can't come on that other side.
Right.
Seems like it's the only option that they have.
About 32 feet roughly from the side, yeah. Okay. Um, the only condition that I would put on this, Joe, is within a year that of the driveway has to come out because we can't have two curb cuts.
Okay.
That sound reasonable to you guys?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
So would you like a motion to close the public hearing?
I would like a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so we need a motion to grant the variance for a 22 by 22 garage resulting in a 10-foot, two-side yard setback where 15 feet is required.
So moved.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Scott F.?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will also vote the affirmative. So staff has 14 days to write a decision. There is a 21-day appeal period. And then if nobody appeals it, start digging.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Do we apply for the permit after the 21 days or do we apply for that once you write your decision?
Yeah, well, assuming nobody appeals your decision, you would take that letter, you'd get it recorded at the registry of deeds, and then you could apply for a building permit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
The next item on the agenda is 42 Newport Drive. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tell us who you are.
I'm Sandra Martin, and I'm here with my contractor.
Kevin McDonald.
And I grew up in the town of Westford, and what I'm trying to do is two, two things. We're here for a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit. I grew up in this home, and my mom is elderly and needs help at this point in her life. She's 80 years old, and the quicker we get in there to help her out, the better. So we're looking for an accessory dwelling unit, a special permit, and then we're also looking for a variance because our accessory dwelling unit exceeds the square footage.
It just so happens that we've been going through the ADU requirements, and you're a little early to get the grant at the 900 feet, but as a matter of right, because we're changing, we hopefully are changing the bylaw.
Heard that.
So I guess, I mean, we usually don't have a problem with ADUs, but I see our building inspector sitting here. Henry, can you clarify some of this other stuff that's going on as far as the poolhouse and shed and everything else for me, please, if you can?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. So there is a shed in a gazebo that had been there for a number of years. Exceeds the 10 years, so basically nothing's been taken against it, so there'd be no enforcement against it.
Okay.
All right? So we consider legal nonconforming. The other shed is the same thing. That has been there for well over 10 years. It's a, something like a little shed for the pool area. It's got a little roof over it.
Mm-hmm.
There was another shed on the left side of the property. They removed that because that was encroaching on the other property.
Okay.
So, so everything is basically legal nonconforming. I can't provide any enforcement on it, and there's really no record of it.
Okay.
In the file.
So as long as you're fine with it?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks, Henry. Um, we've got to actually clear it up.
Like you said, this is exactly why we're trying to redo the bylaw.
Right.
These types of houses.
So just as a curiosity thing, on the new addition, there's a bump out. Right here. What is that for?
I think in the latest, we took that out, or is it still? No, it's still in there.
Not still.
That's gonna be a, it's just gonna be an extra little room for, it's either gonna be a closet or with a barn door on it, or a desk will go in there.
For what?
A desk.
It's an eight-foot bump out, right?
We're thinking a closet.
Yeah, eight feet by 11.6, it looks like. Yeah, okay, yep.
We're gonna put the utilities down in there if we have to in the basement, in the garage part, area of it. It's the only place we have to put any utilities, so the downstairs.
Do they come in on that side of the house? Do the utilities come in on that side of the house?
Do they?
Yeah.
Uh, they come in from the front of the house. Everything comes in from the front. What's that?
Where are they currently located?
Utilities for the house that's there now, they're in the basement of the home that's there now.
Approximately what the addition, you can't handle it?
Uh, no, no, no. I gotta put, everything's gotta be its own, on its own in that place. It's, it's not sized, it wouldn't be sized up enough to handle the new house, the new addition.
Anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition to this? Anybody here to speak in favor of this? Any comments, more comments from the board at all?
Looking after that setback on the side, is that bump out, is that an issue or is that?
That's 17 foot five.
Pardon me?
17 foot five on that side, and it's 15 feet setback over there, so we got it by two and a half feet.
Okay. From the bump out?
You got it from that farthest corner that reaches as close as you can to the neighbor's property. It's 17 foot five.
I'm not sure. So that's, kind of becomes a non-issue, yeah, okay.
Is that?
Yeah, 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 I think so.
Okay. Um, Joe, do you want the variance first or the special permit first?
Close the meeting. Public hearing first, and then variance, and then special permit.
Okay. You have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I didn't hear you, Joe.
No, variance first and then special permit.
Okay. Um, so we need a variance from section 3.3, 3.4, 3.3 for a permit to have the ADU exceed 15% increase in gross floor area of the principal structure. So they're asking for 913 square feet.
So, second.
Dave? Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative. Now we're asking for a motion for a special permit to create the ADU accessory dwelling unit with the top floor of the proposed garage addition.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative. So I don't know whether you heard me say staff has 14 days to write the decision, there's a 21-day appeal period, and after that, you can get your permit and start construction.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 28 Brookside Road. I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Hello.
Tell us who you all are.
My name's Barbara Collins Rigorava. I'm an attorney for the Currens.
Okay.
And I'm just here to represent them tonight in this motion.
Okay.
I'm Robbie Curran.
And I'm Sean Curran.
Tell us what you're gonna do.
So actually, you've done a great job. I do a few of these in different places with your staff report, so it makes my job easy just reading off the variance requested action for construction of a 17 by 7 by 29 by 9 addition resulting in a 6.3 side yard setback where the 15 foot is required. That's essentially the issue. We can tell you what is going on with each, with the addition, so you have a general idea of, you know, where the hardship is and what we're looking for. We also have some arguments, but I understand your procedure that you seem to be using is to ask about if there's any objection, so I can hold on to those arguments after, if you prefer, or just go through the whole thing, whatever you'd like.
Go right at it.
Right at it.
Okay, so, so basically, the Currens are a very nice family, longtime family in this area. Mr. Curran is a teacher. He's come to this community specifically for his family. He has three children that are in the school system. He wants to stay in the town. He loves the town, and so does his wife. She works as, in the design field. She does work out of the home now, like so many people, because of COVID. She'll do work on her computer in the home. So with the family of now five, their needs have increased because they have three small children, the oldest is eight, just, you know, going through this public school systems now. And they only have one full bathroom, so right there, I think that speaks volumes. If you, you know, you have five, a family of five with one full bathroom, you can see in a minute, needed, particularly as kids get older and, you know, they have to catch buses and all that. Another big part of this addition would be a change in the access to their one-car garage. They're not looking for anything big. They're not looking for a three-car garage. They just want to be able to access their one-car garage, which is in a very difficult place to maneuver because the radius, the turn, yeah.
So, sorry, the current garage is not really accessible, which is under the house, so we're asking for a one-car garage to pull straight through, straight in.
Right. They just want to drive in as opposed to coming in on an angle, which is a tight maneuver as it is. You know, certainly, this is New England, so I think, again, we see, you know, the benefit of that. The family has, you know, a lovely space. They don't have a formal dining room. They're a growing family. They want to use some existing space, bump, bump into that, and then have some, you know, real room for the family to grow in terms of a family room, reading room. They're very oriented to education and, you know, the community in itself, so they need the space not only for the parents, but the children as well. Upstairs, they want that extra bathroom. So there's a proposal for the bathroom and actually a walk-in closet. Now, one of the biggest issues that came up was, you know, how close are they getting to their neighbor's yard? And I think there was some talk about, you know, maybe looking in somebody else's window, and that's kind of an uncomfortable thing. We could, at this point, I don't even think they're, they're talking about windows on that side of the building, but I mean, if they did, they would, they could do something like a prosted window or something to that effect. So I think the hardship argument is really there because of the value of the town of Westford, but the other side of that is the value of the people that are applying for this variance. Really good community people. I think I should get to, you know, them a little bit here. That speaks for itself. So in terms of other arguments that might have come up, so we have a legally nonconforming lot, and I probably know more about that than we do in the town of Westford, so I know, you know, that there's the issues of both the commercial and residential aspect of the zoning. I believe this is all going to be in the residential part of the lot. And then the last argument that I would make is value add. You know, sometimes people say, well, if your property gets a little too close to mine, that could hurt my value. I'm going to counter that, having practiced in Newport for several years now. There are places in that, that town, lovely town, and I'm not suggesting Westford, you know, take on the character of Newport. They're two very different places, but there are places where you can kind of squeeze, barely squeeze in between the buildings. They're so tight. So I think it really comes down to, you know, the maintenance of the property, which they've shown, beautiful property, the value they add. By adding this addition, it's certainly gonna make their property worth more money, and when you do that, your neighbor's property becomes more valuable as well. So that's a crux of our arguments in a nutshell. We can add, you know, some more, answer any questions you might have.
So we received an email today from your next-door neighbor.
Yes.
With some concerns, some of the things which you have talked about. And I was just looking for the plan. So there are no windows on that side of the house?
Currently, no.
So you have to understand that there's no, there's no do-overs. The plan you submit is what gets built.
Mm-hmm.
So is there gonna be windows on that side of the house?
Well, we can remove them. I mean, we've talked about not having windows on that side of the house for the addition if we get approved. I mean, we're, we really want to compromise with our neighbors and.
You've had conversations with them?
Yes.
Yes. And we did say that, you know, if we do get approved and we go for a permit set, we could discuss windows with them, but, yeah, we currently don't have windows now on that side. We don't need windows there, you know, for the addition. We would like to have skylights, you know, that's south-facing, so, you know, we could be happy with that.
And I might add just one thing, too, at this point, that, you know, they have looked at different options with the house. The back has septic, so that's a problem, the access to adding on to the back. The front, you know, then you get into the internals of the house, you know, you're cutting pieces of the bedroom to get to another room. How is it going to look in terms of, you know, the overall architectural design of the house? So the side, the side seems to be like the most logical and probably perhaps only space that they really could do this type of project.
So looking at this current plan, there are three windows on the first floor and one on the master suite in the back on that side of the house. And I know that was one concern that had been raised by the abbot. So the other, the other issue is the six feet from the side lot line for this, was that taken from the actual lot line? Did you measure from the wall? How was this determined?
The surveyor made that dimension, yeah.
Because one of the, one of the issues is, is that, that retaining wall that's there is on your neighbor's property.
Yeah.
Along with the fence. The fence is an easy one. The retaining wall, not so easy.
Yeah.
So should I let, Mr. Curran already has addressed this, and I think he does a good job.
Yeah, um, yes, we, we've looked into that retaining wall, how long it's been there. I've spoken to the previous homeowner who we purchased the home for. She said that the previous homeowner before her put the retaining wall there, so that's been there for quite some time, the retaining wall.
At least 20 years.
Yeah. But in terms of rectifying that issue, we've spoken to just a contractor, just a preliminary understanding of the scope of this project, and they've informed us that they can completely remove that retaining wall and then fill in that space with earth and get it down to the exact grade as it is right now. And then in terms of the two sides of our homes, it is now just lawn, and it's filled in, and there's no more retaining wall. And that vinyl fence that's there, which currently prevents our young children and neighbors' children from falling into our driveway, that would be removed, and then there would be no dropage or anything like that.
Yeah, that was actually brought up as a potential, you know, lot hazard, and there's legal terminology that goes with that. This is actually going to solve a problem as well, so by taking that out and doing the fill, the lot improves in that regard.
The garage is pretty deep. Does it have to be that deep? Because you could come forward with that back wall and pick up some extra, uh, feet on that side of a.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, we could move it forward. I think, you know, we kind of wanted to try to build where that retaining wall is so that the structure takes place of that retaining, you know, that retaining wall. Otherwise, you'd have a gap where the retaining wall is, and if we pushed that entire addition forward, you'd have a gap from the addition to the retaining wall.
When you backfill?
Yeah, it would have to be filled, then.
You'd backfill that, but you'd be picking up some space on your sidewall, you know, on this, not much, but it's a foot, a foot or two feet. Does Henry have anything to? He had a couple of, Henry had a couple of comments here on the.
Do you have any comments, Henry? Henry? We're putting you on the spot tonight, Keith.
Again, I'm sorry, but you, you had some, you did some homework on this, on this place, so.
I'm putting you guys in the spot.
Flip it.
All right, so the, the lot is, I mean, if you, if you've been up there, the lot is really tight.
Yeah.
So what they were proposing made sense. I actually walked up there, I took a look at the retainer wall. I did question the owners on it to see if they were gonna do something with it. They said that they would, you know, work on it. If they shift the house forward so that the back of it is flush, it may gain, it may gain inches, not a lot.
Not a foot or anything.
Yeah. So to me, looking at it and looking at the plan, it actually felt good that the garage you were gonna put on, it actually felt really good, so that's why I, I thought that it would probably work well for them. Unfortunately, it's, it's just so narrow back there, you know, and they are in an area where they're in a mixed use. They get a business, they're actually building a house, their house is in the business area, so whether you consider it legal nonconforming or not, it's just kind of a, kind of a difficult situation for them. But no, I didn't, I didn't see any issues. Everything that were, that we talked about, about the fencing and everything, they, they were, you know, able to respond and just say, yeah, we'll take care of everything we need to do. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
That'd be interesting, how the abbot feels with that, picking up this.
Your abbot is the person that sent? Yeah. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this or against? Yep. Come up to the microphone, please, and tell us your name.
My name is Warren. I think the email you're referring to was sent by me itself.
Correct.
So we are just next to 30 Brookside Road. One of the major concerns you already brought up, which was the closeness to the property, the privacy and all of that, but one thing which I also ran with Robbie and Sean is we are also looking. one thing which I also ran with Robbie and Sean is, we are also looking to put an addition room downstairs. I think I put that in the email as well, because our growing parents come and stay along with us, and with the needs issues and everything, they need a room on the lower floor. And looking at the whole shebang, the way our property lots are, there's no other place for us also to put a room. Right behind is a septic, and it's behind the kitchen, so you can't actually put a room there. Right side, there's no clearances, because before we bought that, the PVS owner put a two-car garage, so it's all done. So this is the only lot, and if I have to put a room there, because, again, we love the town, we're not looking to go anywhere, so if you put addition, even staying within the variance, we will be like 15 feet from each other. So that is like awfully close to the two houses. It'll be just a narrow pathway in between going to the backyard.
So if you build an addition on the house, your side yard setback requirement is 15 feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So right now, the current structure, which you see in the picture up there, is about 25 or 25 feet away from the property line.
You think you would not, you would need relief? You would be able to fit that in without coming here to put an addition on it?
What's that?
You wouldn't need relief from this board to put an addition on? You think you have enough space to?
I-
No, he's going to-
No.
He's going to need relief.
Yeah. Because I'm like, we have like nine feet of, like, measuring the thing. When you start building things, it's going to get shrunk down.
That's the question. What would your, if you're proposing, and this is-
Yeah.
But if you're proposing to put something on, what would be your setback from the side yard with your addition? Eight feet, nine feet?
Yeah, probably around that. That's what my guess is, you know. Like, there's, even if you go for the minimum smallest bedroom down there, we would still need some variance.
Need some variance, leave, okay.
And that would be, even if you talk about like, as I said, 10 feet away.
Backfilling where that wall was, that's going to help you, right?
Yes. And the other thing is, it's the way our lots are, it's like an A shape. So they get narrow at the back, they get broader in the front. So when we, when crews make their structure, right, it's gonna, and our house is a little offset. 30-buk side is a little bit front and 28 is a little bit behind. So the whole construction comes right in parallel to us. So even if I put anything, and if I try to go with a little like an L shape, go out and forward where I have more room, it will be like, we'll be parallel to each other. We'll make that A into two parallel lines with a minimum distance between them. Because the current plans, I think in the front, the variance gets a little bit wider than much more narrow in the back. And that is a point. It'll be like, we will have two structures just pointing towards each other, making it narrow. So that's a concern.
Any other concerns?
I'm like, everything else is in the email, pretty much. And I said, as I said, I did contact a couple of realtors to look into it, and with my proposal of adding a structure and without, and everybody out back looking at the area, neighborhood, and they said like, these will be the two properties, be the closest to each other. So I have a contrary report from them that it's not going to increase the value but hurt the value and probably cause delay in selling the house when I have to. And the market does not stay up all the time like the way right now it is. That was exactly his words. He's like, "Right now, it might just sell, but you never know. It's going to create problems going forward if the houses are too close to each other." And that addition is actually, we really need that room. So when I talk about, I'm not hypothetically making it up, we are actually working towards it, planning for it, and I probably think in another year or two, I'm going to put that in there.
These are two, are you both amicable with this?
We are. Our families have been close for a long time. Our children play with each other.
We have brought variations of the plan to Verone and his wife, shrinking it down. We're really trying to work with them. Unfortunately, where we can't really compromise is the location of our addition. We just can't put it back or front.
The only solution I had, like, we did talk about that, narrowing it down, bringing it to like a 12-feet size, which will be like a single-car garage, 12 feet, not big enough. I know it's not going to be very big. 12 feet is the size you kind of need for a single-car garage. That'll, that'll, still, the A structure is causing a problem, and I think Robbie even says it's taking a bump out, I think, at the back. But whenever I just sit down, I tape measure it, try to put anything over there, as I said, a minimum room of even 10 by 10, I, we get awfully close. And I am the same problem, like, where to, where to put a room if I don't put a room over there? The going back, I mean, like, yes, but as I said, they need a car garage. Garage, we can drive straight, and if they keep existing car garage and build going back, the septic on the left side of the house, the right is still optional to build. If you build like that, I do not know. I'm like, I'm not an architect. I do not know much about it. I'm just looking at the maps and the diagrams is all I can suggest right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I get a comment? It's interesting, because that is my house, his house in Kensington, New Hampshire. So I was looking at it, trying to figure it out. But one of the first things I ever, I ever learned in law school is my real estate professor said, and I say this from the day we start things change, and real estate changes, and it's an ongoing thing. And, you know, I realized you have the mission of trying to preserve this community, and it's a beautiful, beautiful community. But part of a community really is the people, and I think you've got a great family here that are really trying hard to stay in this community. It's just not a great time to buy a house out, you know, with the current market. I have seen value added in, you know, homes that are pretty tightly, you know, it may not be ideal, but if you've got a nice addition and things are done right and you've got the right people living in the community, there's value. And I think that's what they're trying to do, is just, you know, it is a hardship for them. We've got a teacher here, you know, and his wife, and their three children, and they just want their growing family to remain in this community and a household where they can grow. I mean, a one-bedroom house is not a household that, you know, you can easily raise a family of five on. I mean, my grandparents may have done it, but by today's standards, it really doesn't work.
The board have any more comments or questions?
Well, neither a comment or a question, but strikes me that you have two families that seem to enjoy one another, live close, and we have a problem. And I'm wondering, if it isn't out of the question, do we ask you to go back and see if you can work with your neighbor and come to some workable compromise so he, so he can do what he would like to do within a year or so, and so that you can do what you'd like to do? I think a six-feet encroachment is really stretching it. We have not done very many of these things.
I agree.
I agree.
And so, you know, we got two choices. We can say no, and we can, in fairness, make some kind of a commitment to your neighbor, but, and I don't know how the board feels about this, but maybe ask you to go back and see if you can sit down and work together to come to some agreement that works for both of you.
I think you make a good point. Plus, we're here today, and you folks are both here today, but what we do now is in perpetuity. We put two additions 15 feet apart. Someone down the road is going to look and say, "What were you guys thinking when you allowed that?" You know, it's for the property and the community. It's not necessarily for the needs, 100% for the needs of the family. You have a family, you have needs, but what we're doing is we're looking at this as how this community is built out, and it's, Westford's a popular community, and it's being built out pretty heavily, and, you know, sometimes these encroachments, you know, and we've had this kind of after the fact, you know. We do a drive-by a year later after we approve something, and we go, "How the hell did we ever approve that? It's too close." And we have two neighbors, and we're looking at plans. Dave makes six feet is, it's, you know, it's almost a third of what the requirement is. And this is forever when you do this, and someone else is going to live there after you leave, and someone else is going to live in your neighbor's house, and they may be shooting daggers at each other, being 15 feet apart. So it's not necessarily 100% for what your needs are. It's what the variance requirements are, what the bylaws require, and what, who may live there 30 years from now. It's going to be the same, it's going to be a different structure.
I just think the garage is a little excessive. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, but it doesn't require a lot of cutting down on it, but you pick up some feet, you can't. I don't know. So can I make a suggestion? And I don't want to redesign your plans, but on the plan, the picture we were just looking at, that man door to the left of the garage door, if you take that out of the front of the house and put it on the side of the garage, you're going to pick up three feet, and that's going to give you almost 10 feet on that back corner. Now, I know you have the bump out for the fireplace, but I think the concrete return for the foundation should be big enough that it's going to get you by the chimney and the fireplace.
But if we move forward, I think it might be difficult, just because we, our plan is obviously with the existing garage, that's just going to, for right now, just stay a storage space. But if we got rid of that door, and again, with the bump out with the fireplace, again, I don't know the exact dimensions, but my concern is, can we even open a car door inside there, you know? Because if we're pulling the car right in and it's right by that bump out, can we even, can I even open my driver's door?
And the garage door is offset because of that bump out.
Right, I understand that. But that garage is 30 feet long, 29.9. My driver's suburban, it's not 29.9. So I think you've got plenty of room to do it. Like I said, I'm not trying to redesign your plan, but we also don't want to say no, because that means you can't come back for two years.
It's eight feet, seven inches from the side of your door to where the wall is.
You have a man door in the back corner of the garage. You could put one in the front corner so that if you wanted to walk in from the street, you could go in there. And the other thing, as I said, you know, the plans that you submit to us that we approve really need to be the final plans. So I think you should get together, as Dave said, with the neighbor, discuss the window factor, okay, and talk about some of these other things. And we're glad to have you come back, but I just don't want to send you back if we don't have to.
So we, I was going to say, we appreciate the opportunity. How would that work out? Do we need to have this done for the next meeting, or what would, you know?
You know, we would give you whatever time you need. If you need a month-
Yeah, one, two months, whatever.
Okay.
We'd continue next month, and if you request a further continuation, we would certainly grant that.
Oh, so they don't have to go through and reapply and all that?
You have the time you need.
No, no, we're just continuing.
No, no, we would let you have whatever time you need to-
If you got rejected, you couldn't come back for a while.
Right, right.
Yeah, we're definitely willing to negotiate the plan. The only thing is that we feel like this is, the location is the best location.
Well, the location, yeah.
Just not a lot of options.
Location doesn't bother me, it's the size.
I think if you somehow move the garage forward, even if it's not level with the back of the house, even if it's a little bit forward, you can figure with a tape measure where that chimney bump out is and where the car would be. And if you shrink it from 17 down to like 15, between bringing it forward and taking a foot off of it, you're probably going to gain enough.
Yeah, we actually submitted another version.
In our package, we did say that, you know, we had conversations with our neighbor Verone, and just because we're trying to be flexible, because we understand, and we're hearing his side, and hopefully he's hearing our side. You might have it somewhere if this is the application. There is another rough sketch. Again, it's not like a permit set or anything. I think it's actually below our narrative or attached to the narrative, if you have that here. Sorry. Just, it's okay. Sorry, thank you for doing this. There was just another-
That's right there, that's right there.
Just this, it's just-
That's right, that's right there.
Another thought to the plan where we did move it forward and such.
What are you, from the corner of that one to your lot line?
Yeah, we're trying to get like 12 feet in the back and in the front.
It would be that corner by the door. What would that be to the lot line? That-
That's more like not-
That one there is going to be your closest one to your lot line.
Yeah, that would be more like nine.
Nine, better than six.
Yeah.
I mean, we just don't, obviously, it takes a lot of time and expense, and, you know, we have a lot of expenses with three kids, going back to an architect and revising and, you know, we just, you know, we don't want to waste our time either. We just want to try to-
And maybe if we could get a sense of what your, you know, number is and what your number is, we could try to-
Yeah, I'm like, we don't have a standard right here, but I'm like-
Yeah, go up the microphone, please.
I like some of this, I like some of the solutions which the board mentioned about getting rid of that door, shrinking the size a little bit. This solution, I did look into it, and I, one thing was, it's not clear from that corner. How much would that be? My understanding was this was just eight feet, leaving us one and a half feet. The front was still 16-plus feet. So if we can bring the structure down furthermore, and as I said, the variance goes above 10, so tomorrow, when I have, because in my head, I'm just thinking, if I put something down there, at least the structures will be 20 feet apart. I'm like, that's, I don't know what options we have over here. So, like the gentleman said over there, if you can take the door out, move it on the side, shrink the structure a little bit more, offset it, we might be able to make it work. The only caveat is, on my property, half of the sidewall is a kitchen, so even if I have to put an entry door to a room, it will be towards the first half of the property on the side. It'll not be at the back. So what I'm coming at is, if I make a room, I can't put a room in the, between the kitchen and stove. This is like the stove area, and then there is a dining area, so that's where I can put a room. So I can also work on the plan a little bit so that we are a little bit offset, we have enough gap in between. But the key point is to shrink the structure down. I totally get it with three kids, one bath. I totally buy that. They definitely need that. But again, garage to me is something which we need in New England. It's a luxury. Yes, we should have that. But if you can shrink it down, make it as slim as we can, offset it, get the door on the side, we might be able to make it work. And then we measure it out, we can go out together, figure it out, how much it is, and if the clearances are good, I won't have a problem with that.
So just, and we appreciate that, we do. So just so we understand, because, you know, as Robbie has said, it's expensive going out and having these plans drawn up again. If you could just, you know, clarify for me what you think is the, the answer.
What I think you should do is-
Don't listen really hard, so go ahead.
So remove the door on the front next to the garage door.
Okay.
Put the door on the side like that plan there shows right there. Now you have access to get in and get out, and that's going to gain you three feet. Easy, okay? So then, what I would do is measure from the chimney over with the garage door being shifted over and see what you wind up for footage. And then, you can work backwards and figure out how big the garage is going to be. You know, my guess is it's going to be somewhere between 12 and 14 feet in that neighborhood, not 17.
And just so I understand with my clients, does that sound workable, or you?
I think we're also considering the family room above that and how-
Right, so you have other things you have to-
So, yeah, it's like a-
That's why I said, look at the garage. You guys agree or disagree. If you can't get together on the same page, then come back and take your chances, I guess. You know, you could do something different. I'm not telling you what to do on it, but with that, you have that jog wheel just right there. What if it came across straight and then have a balcony up above it or something? Just do something architectural with it. But they're concerned about the rooms above the garage.
It's, yeah, that's-
The room above, they could do something. Instead of that jog, it could be a straight across, you know. So, but that's our suggestion to you. You can say, "Okay, that's great. We'll want to do this," or you can say, "Nope, this is the plan. Let's go forward tonight."
Start of the garage.
Want to take a minute to talk about it, or?
I think we're going to decide to take time- I think we're gonna decide to take time to, uh, readjust the plan. Meet with our neighbor because as we express to him, we're trying to express to the board. We, we love this town, we've been here for a while, our children, um, go to school here and we don't wanna upheave that. And, uh, we do respect our neighbor and we wanna keep in good relations and also with the board. So we will try to come up with, uh, a new plan and go from there.
We don't want you to move either.
Yeah.
And by the way, when he comes back, we're gonna squeeze him too.
No, 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 just, uh, we, we, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to make this just our forever home. And we're trying not to ask a ton, like we, we're, we're trying to light and we're trying to make it work, but also comfortable for us. Manageable for us, so, um, we appreciate your feedback and we will look into it and go from there.
I would suggest if you can get a te- like a ten-foot number.
Okay, from the.
The setback.
Setback.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's that point where, you know, is it worth doing if it's only just much bigger?
If you can go equal on your side and not exceed, exceed what they're doing, cause that would be a problem if you came back and yours was worse.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's really not our concern right now.
Yeah, I know.
It's a good reason to have this conversation.
Thank you, yeah.
Meet in the middle, thank you.
Thank you, we're focused on.
Right.
Thank you.
So can we continue this to a date to be tur- to be determined?
You want a month or you want two?
To be honest, we just, we need to talk to the architect. We need to talk to our neighbor, um, so.
Does it have to be another set of drawings or just would like floor one, two and garage? What would you?
Wouldn't be a big deal to amend these.
We're concerned about the cost.
Yeah.
It's always possible, it might be an easy amendment.
You may not wanna go here, but is it possible that they could have their conversation and then Henry could look at these plans and we could go with an amended plan on a dimension? Is that, I mean, that's not, maybe that's a path you don't wanna go.
It's not, it's not so much the path that I wanna go, but we have a building commissioner that needs a set of plans to issue a permit with. So at some point, they're gonna have to give you.
Yeah, of course.
A set of plans.
And, yeah, obviously we, we submit to you was not a permit set, you know, a permit set, so. Uh, and that's gonna cost another financial cost just to do the permit set, so, yeah.
The modification from your architect shouldn't cost you that much, cause all you're doing is that one end of the house. It's not, it's not like a change in everything. It changes.
Well, I mean.
It's a trickle effect.
It's a trickle with the.
The bathroom and.
The bathroom and the.
Sir.
I agree.
You understand what we're.
Yes.
I mean, do we, do we need to see the second story plan ourselves or do we just need to see sort of the foundation with the setback? And then the building commissioner sees the second story plans?
So.
What's the legality in that, Joe?
I mean, you could go for a whole updated set. I guess if your primary concerns are, obviously the, the site plan, we need to be updated, show what the new setback would be. And then it sounds like your primary concerns are the front elevation and then that side that's closest to Thirty Brookside. So maybe those are the revised sheets, uh, to come back to the board, um, if that's what you would prefer. At, at the end of the day, Henry will need a, a full permit set.
Right.
Uh, for the building permit phase. If you wanted to just see those sheets revised, that could be an option.
So, cause basically we're, we're approving, let's call it the foundation.
Right.
The overall box.
Yeah.
You know, if you put five toilets upstairs, we don't care. Okay? So, did you understand what he's asking you for?
Yes.
The foundation permit.
Basically, foundation for front, front elevation, I heard you say, side elevation.
Front elevation, side.
Closest to Thirty Brookside Road, right?
The way to move footprints is what you're saying, right?
Front elevation, side elevation.
Henry?
They'll probably wanna submit a plot plan too, too, so we can verify the setback, right?
Yep.
We really don't wanna deny you.
Oh, thank you. We don't either.
This'll work, it just gets a little massaging.
Yeah.
Yeah, once you, once you figure out the overall size, then you can have this changed to shrink it down. That's all it takes. I mean, we get the wall, we get all that stuff, then it'll all be conditioned in the approval if we so choose to approve it.
Okay.
So there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes that we really don't need to know right now. So go, let's get back to.
So we should pick a date. The next meeting is August seventeenth. If you wanted more time, the, the meeting after that would be September twenty-first. If you just wanted to go two months right out, um, but you could always, as the chair mentioned earlier, um, just go to August seventeenth. If you need more time, request a continuance.
Yeah.
You?
You would, you would email, um, myself or other staff.
I was gonna say, I have numerous contact emails from people.
So I would go, let's go August seventeenth. If you can't get all the parts and pieces put together, we'll give you a, a continuance to the next meeting or whatever it takes. Okay?
Thank you.
We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we?
Move to continue to, um, August seventeenth, okay?
Check.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And just a compliment to whoever does your staff reports, that's really excellent.
They do a great job, great staff.
Great job.
Great staff.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Good luck with it.
Jim had one this big in a long time.
What's that?
Been having a package this big in a while.
Tired? Need a recess?
I think Jim took one.
Little girl's. I was gonna get out of here, he's gonna drive back up north.
No, I'm not going up there now, but you know what? They didn't, they didn't give me, uh, do you have the rough house in? Yeah, you got it.
Yeah.
They jipped the chairman.
Don't have it?
Yeah.
There, you want it?
No, I'm fine. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I do, my pile of papers here.
See, that's silly, he's throwing you under the bus.
Okay, so, um. Rough House, the next one?
It's the last.
All right, um, next order of business is seven Littleton Road, Rough House dog here, daycare. Kind of a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. I hope you guys are from the Rough House, either, you've been sitting here a long time.
Yes.
Tell us your name.
Uh, my name's Steve Boncorsy and the owner of the Rough House. And that's my wife, she's too nervous and shy to come up here, so I'll do all the talking.
So tell us why you're here and what you're looking for.
Um, well, I'll try to keep this in a, on a bridge story. So I believe it was last year, uh, the dog officer came in and he said, how many dogs you wanna write down? I said, uh, I don't know, he's like, give me any number, what's a lot, what's the most you have, what's this? I said, okay, one-ten, that's, you know, the most that I would ever consider having there. And, uh, and then at that point, it was probably about a month or so after he had been, actually it was sooner than that. And, uh, Henry had called me and said, you know, you're only supposed to have thirty-five there. And I was like, I had no idea that I was supposed to have thirty-five dogs. I always thought the dog officer, cause I've had, I actually even one year had the, and the head of the entire state came by to check out my place. So we've had a kennel license every single year since I've been open. I bought it from the former owners in two thousand and it was the last week of two thousand and seven. And at that point, it was ten to fifteen dogs a day. I was a dog trainer, canine behaviorist. And, um, I actually helped them. Uh, the secret of the Rough House, there's no barking, ever. So they said, can you help us with that? Cause their trainer wasn't working, so I said, sure. I was gonna open up a daycare in my hometown of Wilmington. I said, so it worked good and, uh, it kinda went like that. It was ten to fifteen dogs a day. Since that time, as everybody here probably knows, it's a dog world. And I honestly, it was just insane, the ramp up. And Tony Traversa, my landlord, great guy, who is sadly retired, he finally is retiring at eighty years old. And, you know, so always talking to him, I said, hey, can I take more units, whatever? And, uh, cause it just kept expanding and the dog officer would come every year and, you know, do that. So after speaking with Henry, uh, and then Joe, and I'm like, okay, I have to get all of this into, you know, where everything needs to be, so. The great thing about the Rough House, most people don't even know it's there. I think that's, uh, that speaks volumes. It's, um, fourteen years, never one noise complaint, not one barking complaint. There was one time the dog officer came to my place for a barking complaint. And I had him, had her come up to the back pen and it was the house that was like three over into Chelmsford. So we had all our dogs there and there was no barking. So we've never had a noise complaint, uh, no complaints at all really, um, in regards to running the business. Smell obviously would be on anybody's mind. If you walked in, you wouldn't even know it was a dog daycare. My past life, I was a rehab director and a P T, so I'm a very germ-conscious guy. So I make sure we are the cleanest dog daycare you will ever see. And, uh, it's been a bit of a process, there's been some with, you know, COVID, just trying to keep a small business, even though it's a big, small business going. But, uh, staff's been great, Joe and Henry have been more than accommodating, telling me each and every step, trying to get everything, all the I's started and the T's crossed. So I'm just trying to make sure that I get everything, the board's approval.
So, yeah, there's, there's a few discrepancies, one being the number of dogs. And the other one is hours of operation. So I noticed, you know, your hours of operation were Monday through Friday, seven to seven, whatever the hours were. But in one of the pictures, I noticed that your hours of operation were also Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah.
So that has to be addressed.
Sure.
Besides. And I guess the other issue was the fact of the ratio of.
Yes.
Handlers to dogs.
Sure.
I'm sure none of us profess to be dog whispers, far from it.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, those are the items that were mentioned in the staff reports.
Um, I think too, one thing that may give everybody, uh, in regard to the dog, person to dog ratio. There, there honestly is no dog daycare that can do what we do. It's, uh, we have several members that, uh, police, fire, town hall members that all come here. But I think the best is the canine officer, uh, is my new neighbor. And he was looking over the fence and he's like, I train dogs. He goes, I have no idea how the, you do this. He goes, but this, this is great. So having, uh, and I also, I don't wanna say, uh, he's a dog person, but having, he's an expert in his own right to see that is certainly a, I would say, a good endorsement for that.
I have a question about the process of transferring the ownership here.
Sure.
Cause we had a decision in two thousand six. You bought this in two thousand seven.
Right.
So you didn't look at the four corners of the variance? You've been in, you've been in, operating the face of this for a hell of a long time. Whoever your previous owner, didn't go over this with you and say, this is what's allowed here? This is what your lease is gonna be permissible?
No.
About? I mean, you, somehow this fell into a big black hole.
It, it honestly.
Two thousand seven till today, that's a long time.
It, it is. And as I said, it was, it, back then, um, I had two businesses, I was a dog trainer. And they had called me in to help them and they said, we don't wanna do this anymore. Are you interested in buying the business? I said, sure. And met with Tony, he's like, these are my rules.
You had one unit, right? This was, this was variance on one unit.
Yes.
So you bought another unit.
Yes, so.
Expanded it.
Yes.
And still that's in violation of the variance.
Yes.
You didn't say, uh, you know, can I do this? Can I just expand this? Can I?
I, I honestly, I, that's completely on me, I plead ignorance because again, we're talking with Tony, uh, my landlord and in no way, shape, form, I'm trying to put him on.
Tony has nothing to do with the variance of this.
No, I know.
Tony's, Tony's making money off you.
True.
You pay the rent.
True.
You got another, he's got another unit.
True.
He wants to lease it, you're the guy that's right next door. Super nice, sweet deal for Tony.
Yeah.
He's been around for a million years, but nobody's paid attention to this variance since two thousand seven, when you bought it.
Yeah, I.
That bothers me, frankly.
It, and I, as I said, um, you know, talking to Henry too and all that, he's like, cause it came up, he's like, oh, you expanded? And I was like, no, I'm just, I, I honestly was like, oh, it's the do- dog daycare was approved, the dog officer had came, every single year would come in, said, I need to look inside, I need to check everything. And I said, okay. And I said, am I approved for this? And they said, yes. That was my thought process. I honestly didn't have any, cause I've had no experience with, like when I bought it from the last people, like, oh, yep, Tony's great, you're all set. Here, we're approved for the dog daycare and then I would get my kennel license every year.
You bought the business and Tony still became.
Yeah, he was the landlord.
Of the second unit, did he own the second unit?
Yes.
You expanded it to.
Yes.
I think what he's saying though is he never saw the variance criteria.
Yeah, that's doesn't, that seems to, that baffles me somehow that we put this into effect and it was ignored from two thousand seven to two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, I think though my observation falls on the order, also falls on the town.
If he's getting, he's getting a kennel license. You have to get a kennel permit a year, correct?
You know.
And they were, and they were very extensive, they'd come in and I had, you know, a lot of dog daycares too. Like the dog officer will be like, or excuse me, animal control, cause it's not always a dog officer, but I'll go right here, I don't wanna get. I was like, no, you can come in with me, would go inside the pen and all of that. So I, I thought, there's my kennel license approval. I would speak to people in town, you know, cause actually someone, we had a client and, uh, they said, you have a permit. And I said, yeah, I have a kennel license and a business license, all that. So they called the town, they came in, the dog, animal control's like, yeah, you're all set, you have your, I gave you your thing, I signed off on it.
I think the town's a little lax on, on the kennel permits. If you, if you have been, if you have been extended that much over this period of time and they didn't notice a, a, a surge. Shame on us. I mean, that's.
I think that's why he's here though, he wants to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
I understand that.
And, and honestly, it may not appear that way. I try to be a rule follower to the nth degree, trust me. You know, so when I, when I found all this out, I mean, being a business owner is extremely difficult in these times. Just running a business, staffing a business, um, you know, and, cause it was both, right in the beginning of COVID, I got the approval for my vet clinic. So we have a vet on staff as well. It is, you know, aside from this issue here, that's why I wanna make sure everything is above board, a hundred percent. But aside from that, we're the cleanest, we're the safest. We, there's no dog daycare that takes the integrity of, cause my dogs go there and when I'm not there, my staff's watching them. Dogs have taken on, uh, they're family members, we don't look at them as pets. This is not just a business to me, this is my livelihood, I love this, I'm a trainer, canine behaviorist. I work there every day, Saturdays and Sundays, New Year's morning, I was there bright and early, ready to go. So, um, that's, that's why I'm here, I wanna make sure, uh, and as I said, even with this being a, you know, kind of a very murky situation. Everybody's been very helpful in trying to help me get to this point. So I wanna make sure that regardless of, of how it came to this point, I wanna make sure that I do everything right and I'm, I'm transparent. One of the suggestions in there was like, you know, we can make, uh, visits at any time. Someone could come every day, honestly.
Well, I tell you that not to, not, I, I went by there the other day.
Yep.
And I went in and asked, just asked, and they said, I couldn't go in, cause you can't, cause I don't understand, dogs are there.
Well, yeah, you can't just walk in, sure.
So if we go, you know, it, it.
No, but if you say, if you come and say, I need to come in there and see, because Tony is selling the building and I have to take people, they're like, I'm not buying it unless I can look at it. So I, I, I could give you a two and a half hour speech on canine behavior and all of that and on how it works. But if you came to, come to, come Friday, come tomorrow and say, I wanna go in there, okay, come on in.
I did, I asked that.
No, no, but I'm saying if you asked for me, because if you just walked in there, it would be chaos. Dogs know us, they don't know you.
Right.
Um, that's why.
I understand that, that's exactly.
Yeah, and I'm more than happy.
Currently, how many dogs right now have you got?
So the most we ever have would be one-ten. That doesn't.
Currently, right now.
Oh, currently, right now, um, as, I mean, like today, like today was probably like ninety, something like that.
Ninety dogs and you, it's, you're limited to thirty-five dogs on this.
I know, that was when the first unit and that's why I expanded. And as I said, when I first bought it, it was ten to fifteen dogs.
What about the pen, the outdoor, outdoor area?
Yeah.
Was that, when you bought it, did you expand the outdoor area or was that?
No, it's actually smaller, the outdoor area used to be bigger, but it was over on the lot. So.
You had an outdoor area that was bigger for thirty-five dollars, dogs, now you get a smaller one for a hundred. So you had an outdoor area that was bigger for thirty-five dollars, dogs, now you get a smaller one for a hundred.
No, it's, it's.
Math doesn't work for me.
It's not, it's honestly not that way. Um, I have video on my phone, but I, it's kinda hard to show, but there's, as I said, my best endorsement, you can ask your canine officer, he peeks over. There's so much space in there, uh, cause it's inside, outside, where it's connected. Garage doors are open, or I have the do- the doors open. If you drove by, you probably saw us in the back pen. Did you go in the back pen?
I would, hooked in the back pen, yeah.
I have the blockers, so you have to, do you, do you drive a Suburban or an Escalator, something like that?
S U V, yeah.
S U V.
Yeah.
And, uh, cause I see so many people driving around that want a prospective buyers, um, cause they're very suspicious of dogs. Trust me, every single, there's been five potential buyers and they're like, is this a dog daycare? I don't hear anything, you don't have any dogs today? I don't smell it. And then the guy wanted to come in, so I had to let him in. Um, but there's plenty of space. So I understand what you're saying, we had this bigger space before, it was a very unsafe space. It was close to the neighbors. This one is connected because actually in the old one, you would have to walk the dogs to the pen. That opens up a variety of nightmares. Uh, and actually a dog got out, uh, the week before I was getting my knee surgery and, uh, I was hoofing through the woods with a knee brace on, looking for this dog. Thankfully, I also know how to get dogs back, so we got the dog back. This is such a much more safe, and if you guys know Tony, Tony's a great landlord, make money man. He's an extremely stubborn guy, all right? And he said, no, 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 to the pen being the way it is now. And then the day I did it, him and Jeannie, and I said, ah, son, we're gonna, this is better, this is safer, it's smarter. Um, but as I said, it's, if you see it to the normal layperson, you hear the number, um, you're like, oh my God. Everyone, even the dog officer, uh, the previous one, I can't remember her name, she's like, how many dogs do you have here today? And at that time, I was like, oh, we have like fifty-five dogs. She's like, fifty-five dogs? Cause other dog daycares can't do what we do. So she went in, she's like, oh wow, this is great, okay, you're approved. And that's kinda how this, these dominoes went to fall.
I have a question.
Sure.
You, you said one per every ten dogs, staff?
So if I did one person for every ten dogs, and again, if I filmed this for you guys in, in a day, there'd be a bunch of people sitting around.
I, I need a number, is that eleven?
No, so what, what I'm saying, so they were, the original one was one person for every ten dogs. So I'm saying one, so one to twenty. And that's a, it's a great ratio. If you come in and see it, um, I've, I've taken video for the whole, like, past year in, in preparation of this. Um, i- i- and it is, it's.
So staff is one to twenty dogs?
One person for every twenty dogs, yes.
It says here at one to ten dogs.
Right, that was the original.
The second question I have for you, is your outside runs covered?
Uh, I have like pop-up tents, yes. So this.
If it rains, the waste doesn't wash away?
No, there's no waste, we pick up the waste the second it happens.
Waste disposal every week.
Yes.
Once a week it do.
Yep, I have, uh, Two North.
You have containers to ho- keep it in.
Yes.
All right.
Yep, we pick it up, the second any waste is there, it's picked up right away. And I have a company, it's called Two North Waste Disposal, they pick it up every week.
So again, getting back to staff.
Sure.
You can have a minimum of three people there.
Oh, we always have.
Certain days.
Uh, no, we always have five.
So you have a minimum of five.
Yes.
You could still have a hundred and ten dogs.
It's very rare that we ever did, that was like a blip on it. So when the, uh, dog officer came in, he's like, pick a number and tell me what's the highest one. And I was like, oh, one day we had that. Um, and also.
I understand, we gotta give you permits based on numbers you're providing us.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
A lot of dogs.
It is a lot of dogs. And again, if you see it.
Not for nothing, but the other day when I went there, I asked the guy, how many staff people are on? He said, two or three.
Yeah, no, that's not true. That's not true. I can, I can give you my payroll, I can give you pictures, I can give you everything. So the other thing too.
I'm not trying to be a detective.
No, no, I totally understand it.
I needed to take a little sight visit and.
Hundred percent.
Suggested that the board do that as a, so it.
No, hundred percent.
But.
Hundred percent. So the other thing too, in regards to you coming in, so I've had a couple of people come in, um, that were, uh, they saw the legal notice and they were like, you know, the town meeting is where it sure should occur, should occur, that you come and do that. I've had a couple of people come in, kinda ranting and raving, so I told my staff, I'm like, don't tell anybody anything. That's, uh, unless it's a customer in a customer regard, I go, don't, don't get specifics, get me.
Well, you said people rant and rave, and I rant and rave because of complaints or?
No, legal notice. I saw the legal notice, how was this even gonna be here? We've been there, and again, we've been there for so long, no one even knew we were there. So I know that's, I'm not trying to talk out of the side of my mouth or anything like that, but that also is a good thing. I mean, I run a very tight ship, uh, canine behaviors, my staff is training canine behavior. And I don't know if you guys know what Ollie's Law is. Ollie's Law is new, uh, legislation that may come down, um, cause the dog daycare in Denver, uh, was not above board, not doing a good job. Uh, if you go to other dog daycares, not necessarily around here, but there's one person for fifty, sixty, seventy dogs. And there's no separation, bigs and littles are mixed, and there's no, and there's non-stop barking, non-stop barking. Um, so, you know, just again, anytime anybody wants to come back and behind there, absolutely. It's, if you see it, and again, video took today, I filmed it and I said, a picture is worth a thousand words, so a video must be worth like five. I, I go around, people don't believe what we do. And I'm not trying to, you know, go hyper here on this, this subject, but it really is, we do something special here. And the new legislation coming down is gonna be based on my training. And that's a national legislation they're trying to work on, where you have to come from a canine psychology and dog training background. You can't just open up a dog daycare and throw dogs back there.
You crate dogs?
Uh, only at night.
How many, thirty?
Uh, thirty is if it's really busy, but it averages like, we'll get two, three during the week sometimes, weekend, nine, ten, twenty.
During the day they lose in the, in the.
Yep, totally, totally crate free. That's one of our, that's our, we were one of the original people that said crate free. Now crate free, if you're not a canine behaviorist, it's a recipe for disaster. And if you don't have a well-trained staff, uh, it's gonna end badly. Um, and I could say too, my.
Staff still bothers me with a hundred and ten dogs.
Yeah, and again.
It really does.
And again, I know totally your skepticism, hundred percent, pick a day, come in, I can have walk you through there, you won't believe it. It really is that way. I mean, I can even email you the video if you like, I have like, probably too much video that you guys ever wanna see. It's just dogs sitting around, dogs play. So the whole thing for me being a canine behaviorist, um, I'm trying to think of a good analogy for you. You guys have been doing this a long time, you see the people in the audience. You can pick out who's gonna be the problem before the problem ever starts. That's my job is getting, so I was trained, uh, canine behaviorist. I can s- see things way before they start. My old company was called Barkbusters, I was called in by the Drake and Animal Office, uh, let's see, Reading, uh, Bill Ricker, they would call me in to help in dog situations when I was just a trainer. And I had a couple of cases where the animal controls, I was like, I'm not getting near that dog. It came after me, I maced it, now it wants to kill me and hate me. Did my thing and they actually, I was on their selectmen's meeting and all that, and then they saw that and they were like, oh, oh my goodness. I didn't even know this was a thing, cause they're animal control, not dog officers, as most people think they are. So I, by all means, I'm more, I'm an open book and I wanna make sure that I get this hundred percent right. I've been in this community forever. Part of my business too, that I'm very prideful about is, it's big, it's going beyond my expectations of anything I ever expected. But we've had people that are, we just recently, someone passed away, their mom passed away in the middle of the night. We're like, bring, bring your, bring them in, bring your dog in. People having kids, we're like, don't worry, people get stuck traveling with COVID. We had one guy, he's like, I'm stuck, what do I do? We're like, don't even worry about it. I run my business that way, I love the Westford community, I've done the Patriots basketball for the high school for years. Uh, Roden Bush, I've done so many different charities, being a part of the community and all of that. So it's, I know exactly where you're coming from, where this is like, how's this even happen? I completely plead that that's on me. And as you said, like, the town would know, because I thought the dog officer was my liaison too. He's with here, saying, okay, you're approved for this, and, and that's it. So I wanna make it right and whatever you guys need me to, to show you, I'm more than happy to do.
So is the long-term boarding?
Uh, most people just board for a weekend or a week.
Or a week, like you're on vacation.
That's like long term. We did, I had one client that got stuck in India for three weeks, four weeks. But what we do too is, we'll take that dog home, because being any dog, um, I don't know if you guys have dogs, but a, a dog, like, even the best daycare in the world, after a couple of weeks, that can be, it's exhausting. If you took your dogs to my place, your dog will sleep for three days, cause it's mental stimulation as well as physical. But, so what we do is, you know, we have the owner's permission, we're like, okay, we'll take the dog home, I'll take the dog home to my house for a day, whatever, give it a rest, whatever. That was a very rare exception, so like, like I said, he was stuck in India for like three weeks or whatever it was.
Dave, how many full-time staff do you have?
Full-time staff, I have, so complete staff, I have seasonal right now, so I'm on about twenty people right now. So full-time is about six of us full-time.
Twenty-four seven?
Yes.
Twenty-four seven, staffed?
Yep.
So somebody's at the facility twenty-four hours a day?
Yes.
I don't mean, I don't mean you're peppering it, but is, is the vet full-time?
Uh, the vet, we just started it last year, so the vet, I have twenty-four access to her.
So it's on call?
Yes, on call at all times, but she does appointments once a week, it's gonna ramp up to two times a week and, and that.
Dave. So who is your backup?
Who's my backup for what?
Well, I see you get run over by a truck. I mean, you make a, you know, you, you, you have a great pitch, but you know, you gotta have.
Where you go with that? So I will put this out there too, I have staff that's been with me for five, six, seven years. So I don't think any other dog daycare can even get a sniff of that, because if you guys, and again, you're not dog experts, you're not in the dog business. This is the staff, some teenage kid, boom, if I had to get a new one, boom, I know, I know every dog in that place. I don't know the owners, cause I'm in the back pen all the time. So if I was to get hit by a bus, uh, even my wife, who's back here, she knows how to do it, my son is excellent. Uh, I have people that have trained, they've been there for years. Uh, so it's not like some kid going, geez, what do I do?
No, I understand, but it seems to me if we approve your plan to go to a hundred and ten.
Mm-hmm.
I think we do need to know what's the management structure, if you will.
Oh, I can give you that, uh, right now. I have, myself is the owner and trainer, I ha- I don't do training there anymore, cause I'm just too busy. So after me, there's Brianna, and she's been with me for five years and she is my G M. Uh, then I have Christine, she's my assistant daycare manager. Uh, she's been with me for eight years, nine years. Uh, then I have Lance, who's my, uh, boarding manager, he's been with me for about three years. And then all my, some of my part-timers, uh, I had one, you guys might even know Ian Donovan, the Donovan's of Westford. Uh, she was with me since day one and she finally had to leave, cause she's got like five grandkids now, so. Um, but there's always a management, we have a management, and I can give you a plan if you, if you require that, absolutely, I can give you that.
Well, I, I think it would be.
Sure.
If you have thirty dogs.
Yes, someone is always there, hundred percent.
The other point, I think, and we should, I think, put in the permit if we approve it, is that yearly, we ought to get uh, sort of inspection or approval, or I don't know what the right words are.
Enforcement.
From the animal control officer that they have, if you will, inspect it or they, what do, what do, what's the right?
Well, they do come every year.
Report.
He enforces it.
You mean like a more detailed report or?
Well, I don't, you know, I don't, what you have seems to be working, but I think we've, you put us on notice, we've been a bit negligent. And I think we should be clear that we ought to get, it ought to be, uh, maybe the word's inspected or.
Yeah.
Inspecting, signed off annually by our animal, animal, animal control.
Sure, hundred percent.
So during the day, your dogs are both in and out?
Yep.
They're not all in or all out.
Nope, they're, they go as they please.
Your pen is, your outside area is what, two, what's that, a hundred by?
It's like ninety feet by twenty feet.
And that's right, so would it conceivably, be a, would there conceivably be a hundred dogs in that outside area?
There's never, the dogs are.
I can just envision a hundred dogs in there.
All the dogs are outside at the same time.
If all the dogs were outside, um, we don't let that happen anyways. Plus the, if you saw it, as I said, I, if you guys want, I can film several times, I, you know, whatever you need me to do, I can show you. Because I get, like, even the dog officer was like, no dogs today? I said, no, we're full today. He's like, really? All right, went back, he's like, holy crap. And again, e- even then, he's like, how do you do this? So you don't know, like, doing that, so obviously hearing that, anybody would go, holy crap, a hundred dogs, that's insane. Um, but they're never, they're, they're always in, they're out, there's some dogs that hate going outside. Uh, I always joke around calling millenniums dogs, cause they'll go to the bathroom inside, even though the door is open and it's right there. And they clean that up immediately too. But yeah, there's never, we wouldn't allow that anyways, we'll have some dogs, we can call them in and all of that. So, but it's never like that. There's never been a case where they're all in, all out, and we're, trust me, year-round, there's some dogs that will be outside, no matter how cold it is.
You know, I think this falls on the board of health more. You, you have to have inspections over there for the board of health, you, you must store.
I've never had anyone ever come.
Store food there for supplies and so forth.
Uh, we, I mean, like, the dogs that are overnight, yeah, they get there, we have little cubbies that are in their crate, so yeah.
That's not, the board of health has never inspected you over there.
No one from the board of health has ever contacted me in any capacity.
I'm shocked.
So Henry, do you have a comment, those regarding the reporting issue or the inspectional issue at all?
We, we could, from the building department, we're gonna do a certificate of inspection, so we could, we could have a lot of the buildings in, in, of businesses in town.
Okay.
So we could do that and provide a report so you would have that yearly if you'd like, then we could do that.
Is that something, Dave, that you were thinking about?
Yeah, it just, we oughta, so we're not embarrassed.
Yeah, well, that way we have two different boards looking at it. I mean, we got the, the building department looking at it and you got the dog officer looking at it.
Honor, that's completely fine, whatever, as I said, whatever you guys need, I, you know, finding all this out and the commotion of life.
If you had a stable, you'd have a stable inspection every year from the town.
Yeah.
And we, and they do provide us service.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, the animal control has always come since I've been in business every single year and twice that one year. And that was the head of the, that was the, that was the head of everything.
Probably more than that now.
And I didn't get hit by a bus, no.
So you said a hundred and ten is the most you've ever had?
Yes.
If you could average it, what's the average per day?
Average per day.
The week?
During the week, probably, things have changed a little bit since COVID, so it has dipped a little bit. So I'd say our average is like eighty-eight, is probably average.
Eighty-eight per day.
We were supposed to be thirty-five.
And you say you always have five on staff?
Yes.
Now, you have the thirty overnight, you have one person there overnight?
Yes, so dogs will go into their crates at night, sleep in there, and in the morning, morning staff comes in, dogs go out.
Now what time's that?
Uh, they start getting the dogs ready at six.
So you have five people report there at six?
There's one person getting the, all the food ready, and then at seven, there's actually six of us in at seven A M.
Okay, and that's when drop-off start and everything like that?
Yep, that's when we open, sure.
And then, when does it go down to one person at night?
Uh, one person at night, so depending on how many dogs we have staying, cause as I said, sometimes we'll have three, four, five dogs, that's it. So there'll be one person, but there's always, anything over fifteen dogs, there's two people there.
Okay.
And the dogs go in at night to sleep, ten o'clock usually, sometimes ten-thirty.
So I guess what, my question is, what time do you go from five or six down to one or two?
So at six-thirty, that's when the boarding staff is in, and that's when we'll go down to five people to two people. And they feed, the dogs usually pooped. They don't even wanna get out of their crate, they'll stay in there, so.
I'd shoot my dog, he pooped in the crate.
They don't, they don't ever poop in the crate, ever. Unless a dog is, you know, and that's the other thing too. Again, when it comes to running a tight ship, I have great managers. And we make sure that dogs are going in when they're supposed to go in, not earlier, not later. And as I said, I'm a stickler for cleaning. We clean better than any dog daycare that's anywhere. I'd stake my name on that, without hesitating.
So how do you clean the artificial turf outside?
Good question, so.
Question of curiosity.
Yep, artificial turf, uh, we use a product called Wizy Wash. So it's used by NFL colleges, playgrounds. Uh, it's a, uh, water pH balance bleach, kills everything, kills parvo, kills all that stuff, but it's safe. I could spray it on me, and there's nothing.
You just spray, you don't suck it, you don't vacuum it up?
No, we just spray it, and that'll.
But you wash, where's it all drained to? Cause you, you, you need a wetland though.
Yeah, there's a drain right at the edge of our, uh, slight slope. Here's our pen, right there is, you probably might have even seen it when you drove by, it's right there, and that, everything drains right into that.
Again, the Board of Health has never looked at that.
No one has ever, I've never seen anyone from the Board of Health. I've had, building inspectors came, OSHA came by, and I thi- I don't know, I could be wrong, Henry, it might have been like five years ago, someone came by to do a, I don't know who it was, but I wasn't there, and they said they had to inspect the outlets and everything else, and.
I'm assuming the Board of Health don't, doesn't know you there, like everybody else doesn't know you there.
Okay, so even the Board of Health, the fence, it says, the variance was a solid, was that fence there when you transferred ownership, same fence?
Uh, I put a new fence, and the old fence was wood. This one is metal, and it's a.
Like a fabric or something, or what's?
Yeah, I got fabric on the outside to block it, because, uh, the boxing place.
Yeah.
Used to have people run around all the time. And everyone loves dogs, so they'd run by, and even though I had the fabric there, they'd be like, hi puppies, hi puppies. And that gets the dogs going, so we have to correct them. Um, which we'll do in two seconds, but that was a liability. Waiting to happen, talk to Tony, talk.
Was there a solid fence in there when you purchased this?
It was wood. Which wood is bad, cause dogs chew wood, dogs get out.
Cause the variance does require a solid fence. I'm not sure if that qualifies what you have now.
Um, it's safer than wood, but I mean, I can change that too, if you guys wanna chain link, well, that's an easy fix, or I don't know what else would put for a solid fence, other than wood.
Solid fence, but it did say in the variance that we.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I could do a wood fence, but.
Of course, when the variance was granted, I think this was the one and only time that this board has ever seen a doggy daycare.
Yeah, you know, your memories are funny things.
We used to have a Bobber.
I remember pretty well.
Yeah, I still get her mail.
We sort of scratched our heads.
Yeah.
Big daycare. And, uh, here we are, a few years later.
It was one of the deep three years ago, a big channel, uh. It was a conservation one on Cold Spring Road.
Spring Road, yeah. So, any other questions from the board? So from what I'm hearing is, the staff ratio is one to twenty. A hundred dogs, could be a good number. There's usually five staff members around, except at night it goes down to one or two. The maximum number of boarding dogs is thirty.
Vets on call.
Vets on call, waste is removed once a week. And the building commissioner has said that they could do a yearly report, um, submitted to this board. Henry?
Just a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, on the inspection, we based that on, on the conditions that you may, you know, have tonight for the amount of dogs. When I do the inspection, how much staff will be there according to the amount of dogs that are there. So that's all we'll do that day. Unfort- you know, that'll be the only day that we'll see that.
Okay.
That's, that's the one time we do a number.
But you go in and announce, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, no, what I typically do is I'll, I'll contact them and have them, yeah.
It's called a stage inspection, Henry. I've done those. I set them up myself, it worked real well.
Typically, the certificate inspection is set up with the, uh, the owner ahead of time.
Yep.
We can walk them together. Um, whatever condition you set tonight, that's all, basic condition.
And do you look at basic safety items while you're there?
I will look at, make sure everything's safe, everything's not blocked in. So we'll do the whole thing.
And one thing that I just would like to add is, I have over a two-hundred dog waitlist to get in. And I don't advertise, um, I haven't advertised in years, so we don't allow these, I haven't taken a new dog. I don't even know. Denise, do you know? Remember how long? It's been like over a year since I've taken a new dog. The only way you can get in is if you were a former client, or you had a dog that used to come. So I'm just saying that because I'm not interested in jamming. I literally could have two-hundred dogs a day if that was safe, and I was just all about the money and all of that. So I just wanted you guys to know that I'm not just trying to jam dogs in there, so. And at any time, it's an open invitation for anybody that I, if you wanna come by and say, hey, I wanna see this for myself, by all means, just come in and ask for me, hundred percent.
Does anybody wanna go and see this operation before we make a decision? Hey, apparently.
I may, we may pop in, but I.
Pop in anytime.
Do a pry.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
It wasn't just in the board, I guess. And I wouldn't have shot my dog, but I, I would be disappointed if I went to.
Were there any other criteria or specifications that we would like to ask, that I didn't mention?
Just wondering about, I mean, I guess it's not a bad location, but, you know, we, we, we condition us to thirty-five dogs. So there's thirty-five people, thirty people a day coming in and leaving.
Yep.
That's sixty trips. Now we times that, times three, now you got a hundred plus trips in and out of that location. Uh, I think you have ample parking in the.
Yeah, park, parking's never been a problem.
I mean, is it like a crush at seven and a crush at five?
You know, it used to be that way.
Day, day school getting out or something?
It, it's totally different now. You can go all the way around.
That used to be a one-way thing, when Tony was there years ago, you'd just go around. Would that be a safer thing for that? Egress onto one-ten that way?
Um, I, you know, when Tony was there, I said, Tony, I wanna take, you know, I'd like to do this and that, and this and that, so it would have been even bigger, but Tony said no. And he said, I have to have egress both ways. So, I just took that as gospel.
Because he doesn't have the whole building as the other, so we, so we can't.
In the old days, we would literally have like fifteen, twenty people waiting to get in, right at seven.
Yeah, yeah.
COVID's changed it, it's, it's a much slower pace. I mean, we'll have times where we'll get fifteen dogs, and I mean, if, come in and just stand in lobby and see how we expedite it, bang, 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 boom, dog goes in. It's literally, it's like a pit crew, bam, boom, boom, get the leash, check them in, bang, it's like thirty seconds.
I mean, I think there would have been complaints, obviously, he's been doing this for fifteen years, with the numbers that he's doing.
Without question, I, I give you.
The town would have already made notice to, to traffic.
Again, I.
We have a good location, so sort of on the, it's a creative westward, and it's not, it's a commercial area, it's not like you have a lot of.
I have had a couple of neighbors come over on the Chelmsford side, that just like, I heard there was a dog daycare here. And they're like, where is it? I'm like, you're in it.
Respect the buyer or something, probably, yeah.
So the other thing is, seven to six-thirty would be the operational hours, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, yes.
And eight to six on Saturdays and Sundays.
And Saturdays and Sundays are super slow. I mean, it's usually just the boarding dogs, but there'll be sometimes ten daycare dogs tops.
It's a need basis.
Yeah, and I, it, I thought it would be more, but, you know, with COVID, because people weren't traveling, but there's really not much of a need for the daycare on the weekends. So, which is good, because then I'd have to just have more staff and more staff, so. But yeah, it's really slow on the weekends.
So, anything else?
I don't think so.
I think we've pretty much addressed everything that was in the original variance, and the requests made by the applicant uh, for the changes. Did you get all those, Joe?
The number of dogs to be boarded overnight?
I said a hun- oh, overnight, thirty, thirty.
Thirty, okay.
Total number of dogs is a hundred?
And then, just the only clarification would be on the fence, if you wanted a different material, or if you're satisfied with the chain link, with the fabric?
If it's working, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. That's fine. So it's implied that, that your coverage is seven by twenty-four?
Yes.
You could, as, somebody is reachable at that number?
Always, yes. And unfortunately, I have gotten calls in two, three in the morning.
But that should probably be in the.
Add that one too, Joe?
For our access?
Well, it's, uh, seven by twenty-four telephone coverage, staff.
Yeah, staff coverage, someone's always there. The only time someone's not there is if there's no dogs, obviously, so, which does happen.
They don't pay you help to sit around doing nothing?
Well, don't get me started. You would think, I mean, you, you basically get paid to play with dogs, I mean, I could show you. If you guys go on Facebook, go on Facebook, and look at the roughhouse, and there's people sitting, you get a dog on your lap, and petting the dog, and I'm like, well, I'm paying people to basically just, you know, get kisses and pet dogs all day. It's a great world.
Alright, so, everybody's all set with what we've discussed?
Check's fine.
Yeah. Okay, so can we have a motion? So are we gonna, are we gonna modify?
I was gonna say, so, so move with modifications suggested.
Yeah, the conditions for the two thousand and six, um,
Variance has.
Variances, with the conditions, as, that I've stated, Joe has. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will also vote the affirmative. Staff is gonna give, uh, write a report for fourteen days, there's a twenty-one day appeal period. Can't see that there's gonna be any issues, but after that, you should be able to get your paperwork.
Great.
Henry will knock on your door once a year, along with, uh, the dog officer.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, continue the good job.
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Thank you. Didn't mean to bill you, but when you're unknown like that.
No, I mean, this is, this is one of those things, and, you know, once I started talking to Henry, and I'm like, oh boy, I'm like, and then seeing other things, so I really do appreciate all the help, everyone, the staff here. Um, cause again, I live in Wilmington. And I kinda had a, a good, and in the old days, my aunt was a town clerk, so things went pretty expeditiously and, and anything, but, uh, yeah, it's a process, I know. So I just wanna make sure it's a great community, I've been here, really appreciate everybody's time, and anytime if any of you wanna come in, by all means, I'm an open book.
Great.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate your time, good luck.
Thank you, nice meeting.
You too.
Okay, so I guess that's it. Anybody have any, uh,
gender issues?
Open business, closed business, no business?
No business.
Joe?
You painted a different story.
Joe?
The organization of officers, so we want to be chair for the.
Yeah, what's that?
No, no.
What's that?
We have the, uh.
Thanks a lot.
Annual organization of chair, vice chair clerk positions for the board for this fiscal year.
What does that do?
Thought we did that.
Thought we did that.
Usually we do, we usually do it in the, this first meeting, this July meeting.
What happened was, after Bob passed.
Yeah, oh yeah, after Bob died, we did it.
Okay.
I, I nominate Slate.
Same, second, same Slate. Who just did it? Four months ago, five months ago?
No, a year, Bob died a year ago.
November? Was that a year?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh my God, I thought it was like the fall.
Okay.
Yep.
So we have a, um,
Seems late.
Nomination, a second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call vote, or can we just go aye?